Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Palaca Historic Preservation Board meeting. Today, April 1st, 2021, and I for Fool's Day. We're going to call the meeting to order, please. Call the meeting to order. Who's going to read the roll call? I'll just, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped around on you, I am so sorry. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Who would like to lead the pledge? Okay, is that it? Okay, Elizabeth?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance.
There's a flag. America. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Reverend Mulberry is going to give the invocation, so we need to stand again, please.
Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity to come together. We thank you for the minds of your people meeting. We pray for your directions, for your instructions, and certainly, God, for your purpose to be manifested. We ask for your hand to guide us, to direct us as we do the business of the city. Be with us in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now roll call, please.
Roberta Correa.
Present.
Richard Stackpole. Not present.
Linda Craybill.
Present.
Laura Schonberger.
Present.
Elizabeth Van Renssberg.
Present.
Mary Reese, not present.
Larry Beaton.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. I am going to read the appeal procedures and ex parte communication disclosures. Notice any person aggrieved by a decision of the board may, within 15 days thereafter, apply to the City Commission for review of the board's decision. Such application must be filed with the city manager in writing. Objections by property owners to national registered nominations must not, must be notarized, excuse me, to be included in the record, Section 54-474 Palaca Municipal Code. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the Historic Preservation Board with respect to any matter considered at such meeting will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may to, may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made at the applicant's expense, which record includes a testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, per Statute 286-105. Thank you. Has, does anybody have any ex parte communications to disclose?
With regard to all applications?
With regard to any or all applications, yes.
This is probably not supposed to do the ex parte communications, but I just want to be absolutely sure. It's in response to the Oak Street application. The former gentleman that was in charge of this sort of thing at the city did reach out to my husband and ask him to please contact the applicant.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Hi, this is Valeria Thomas. If everybody could use their microphones so that I can hear you as you speak. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, with regard to the Oak Street application, the former planning manager for the city reached out to my husband as a restoration contractor, asked my husband to please reach out to the homeowners, which my husband did attempt to do. He did not make contact, we were not compensated in any way, and we do not expect to receive any sort of work contract in the future. But I did want to point that out.
Thank you. In regards to 519 Kirby Street, just for the record, I did sell the property to the current owners but have no knowledge of their plans as requested in the COA. That was, anybody else? Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the February 4th, 2021 meeting?
I move we accept the report.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public comments will be available by calling 386-329-0100, extension zero. Again, 386-329-0100, extension zero, or by using the YouTube Live Chat feature. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and please provide your name and address for the record. No action will be taken on those items, though. Consent agenda. And does that, oh, excuse me, does anybody have any public comments? Anybody in Zoom land? Okay, closed for public comments. Consent agenda. 415 Bronson Street, certificate of appropriateness. Applicant Nancy Burke requested to build rear shed and stairs, Mr. Salmons.
Yes, the rear porch is in deteriorated shape, and they asked to replace it with one that's very similar in nature. My recommendation was to approve the porch as long as they painted the railing white, like the painting in the front and the way the railing in the back porch used to be. Any questions?
Is the property owner here? Or on Zoom? Okay. Does anybody in the board have any questions?
This is basically a application to put a back porch on to kind of replicate what was already there.
To replace it with a similar back deck porch.
I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, 319 Kirkland Street, certificate of appropriateness. Applicant Marsha Gannell requests to repair siding, install lattice skirting, construct off-street parking, and new storage shed. Mr. Salmons?
This is an old house at Kirkwood. Metal roof leaks badly. They intend to replace a metal roof with a new roof that's similar in nature. There are large sections of wood siding that are missing or damaged. They intend to replace those with the same type siding. The current house is currently on a raised brick platform that allows animals to crawl underneath and nest, and they'd like to install some lattice skirting around the house to discourage wildlife from doing that. And they'd like to paint the house because of city shoring and peeling off. They intend to repaint the whole and repair the entire structure with siding and windows and doors with a cream color. Existing doors and windows remain. Their desire to alter the driveway from, am I on the right one?
Yes.
Driveway with pavement from the property line back. I think the city is going to be doing some work in the front. Landscaping has been overgrown, they plan to remove that, and they do desire to put a small shed in the back for lawn equipment. This one and actually 321 are very similar in nature. The two owners are in business together. The houses look almost identical and are in identical shape. So the staff has actually recommended approval on both of them.
Okay, and Ms. Gannell, do you have to, you want to come up? And do you want to say anything about your project? Please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Marsha Gannell, I'm representing 319 Kirkland. I'm also joined by the other owner, Michelle Bruno, who's on the ZRM call for 321 Kirkland.
Hello.
So I think you summarized very well there. You know, we're keeping the same character and footprint that's on the existing houses. We just really want to repair and replace, and with the exception of adding the lattice and adding the shed. So we're, and appreciate, again, once again, the emergency, the authorization to do the works. That was very, very much needed and appreciated. The second day, the hurricane warnings went through, and we were moving equipment to get it into dry spots. It was very nice to have those put on there. So thank you to the board for your help with that. I think you summarized very well, I'm just here, and Michelle's here if there's any questions or comments.
Does any, I'll let anybody else go first, I have one quick question. Anybody having questions? I'm sorry. Larry, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to confirm the dimensions of the storage shed. The paperwork said three feet by six feet. And I wanted to confirm the roof style of the shed, and also if they know, is it a standard height shed that they're proposing?
We haven't confirmed exactly what we want to get, but we absolutely, it's a standard height, off the shelf, no bigger than three by six. You know, we want it to, you know, kind of be character-wise appropriate, so we just haven't. But I've been driving, driving by the number, number ones between my commute, back and forth between Palaska, Palaca, and St. Augustine, and there's a number of alternatives that I think would serve us well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was actually going to ask about the shed as well, but Larry beat me to it. I was really gratified to see that the applicants were not considering replacing the doors and the windows. That is fantastic, and I congratulate you for keeping the historic integrity of the building. Happened to be by there today and just thought, wow, isn't that going to be beautiful?
Thank you.
And I was going to basically ask the same question about the design of the shed as well. So Larry beat us all to it. I certainly appreciate everything that you have done to those homes. They were neglected for so many years, and they look so much better, thank you.
Yes.
And it's funny, because that corner between Laurel, Kirkland, and Seventh Street is pretty much Times Square as far as the South Historic District goes. So I think everybody has been by, you know. But we, and we've had a number of people that have stopped and taken the time to make comments and really appreciate that.
I thought you were joking. I thought you were joking. That you were leaving him in there by himself.
Is that, is that Michelle?
I'm.
Okay.
Somebody was speaking, and we weren't quite sure who it was. It wasn't you, was it, Michelle?
No, it wasn't me.
Okay.
Well, and anybody wants to stop by and help scrape those old windows, you know?
It's been fun watching it, though.
Thank you, so, all right, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and sit back down, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, folks, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we accept this application.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Mr. Salmons, will you, we will do 321 Kirkland now, kind of separate, so there's a separate vote, is that okay?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I don't think anybody voted nay.
Nobody.
Yeah, I think, Larry, did you say yay?
I said yay, and I think Michelle said yay.
I didn't hear a nay, it was a yay.
Yeah.
It's a beauty of Zoom, it's this mixed audio, I think, it's hard to collect everything.
It was a yay instead of a nay.
Okay. 321 Kirkland Street, certificate of appropriateness. Applicant Michelle Bruno requests to repair siding, install lattice skirting, and construct off-street parking. So basically, a similar application minus the storage shed.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else, any questions anybody has? And the applicant is on Zoom somewhere.
I am.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Bruno, you'd like to make?
No, Marsha covered it. We're working together to restore these both properties into similar conditions, so we're ready to move out.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve this application based on staff recommendation.
I second it.
Super motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 519 Kirby Street, certificate of appropriateness. Applicant Richard and Elizabeth Rogers request to construct a three-bay garage and fencing. Mr. Salmons?
Yeah, basically, they requested to build this three-car garage with a decorative ornamental fencing around the property. The, if you look at the plans of the three-car garage, it's, looks really good. It's wood. And the fencing is black, and it blends right in. Staff has recommended approval on it. We do recommend that that garage be painted the same color as the home.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, just, do one of you want to come up, or both of you for that matter? Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Richard Roberts, we live at 519 Kirby, me and my wife Elizabeth. And we just want to, I need a garage for storage, and like, everybody knows who walks by my house, my fence is like right on the sidewalk, and I have dogs, so, in there, I want to move it like three feet back and be able to plant some shrubs to give a buffer for people walking. to give a buffer for people walking down the sidewalk and stuff.
Okay.
And it will be the same color as the house, the same.
Okay, the garage. Does anybody have any questions on the board, Mr. Roberts? Mr. Beaton?
No questions.
Okay, anybody else?
There's the diagram now.
Yes. How far back will the garage be set on the property, Mr. Roberts?
Whatever the setbacks are.
Okay.
As far as the corner.
Okay.
On the road as possible.
Okay.
And you will, only you won't see this side, you will see the other.
Okay.
You won't see the wide side.
Anybody else have any questions? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
You're looking at me, I've been busy.
I'm looking, now I'm looking, I have a choice of three individuals, all Larry.
I know that we accept this.
As recommended.
As recommended.
By staff. Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And regular business, 804 Oak Street Certificate of Appropriateness. Applicant John Martin, retroactive request to replace metal roof with asphalt shingle. It was a unanimous, it was a unanimous, unanimous vote, excuse me. I'm sorry. Anyway, 804, applicant John Martin is here, could you please give your name and address for the record? Okay, we'll let Mr. Solomon explain the case first.
Basically, there's some work being done on the property. At some point, I guess it wasn't Mr. Martin, but it was somebody did shingles on the property. And so it ended up, somebody caught it, and so he's, he's, he's doing repairs to the foundation of the porch at least, and some of the pillars. And he's ultimately going to put metal shingle, a metal roof back on, but for right now, he has to resolve the metal, the shingle roof, so he's here for, to do that, and he will ultimately, and probably the repairs to the, to the porch. And then ultimately, he'll come back and get a certificate of appropriations to go back from shingles back to metal.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Martin? Let, Mr. Beaton, do you have any questions?
No questions. Did I, I believe I did read in the summary that he's already put some metal back on for a portion of the back roof, is that correct?
I've never done any work at all through the building since I bought it, to the exterior.
Okay, and I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, is a portion of the roof, maybe I'm getting this mixed up with another case, is a portion of the roof still metal? What, what was the answer? Oh, it's all asphalt, okay.
Could you hit the button, please? Thank you.
Microphone.
Okay. And I did look back on the Florida site master site file photo, which is circa 1983, and it was metal in 1983. That's just, only metal, but it was metal at that point in time.
I am, I know metal roofs.
Yeah.
Yeah, this house, this house was built sometime between 1915 and 1924. It appears on the 1924 San Morton map.
Yes, it's definitely a craftsman style, so it's of that era. Any other questions?
Okay, I think it's just great that you're renovating and upgrading it, so, thank you.
Hopefully, it won't look like a crack out there, but I'm done.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all set. Okay, do we have a motion? I'll tilt my head both ways quickly.
I move that we accept it as, I thought we had a motion on it.
Not on this one.
Not on this one, no, okay, as recommended.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed?
Any opposed, sorry. I heard everybody say aye.
I think we hear all four of, yeah.
Just for record.
I understand, I understand, yes. Staff comments, any other comments beyond the agenda?
Well, this is my first time here, so if I've done anything different, if you want me to do something differently, just let me know, and I'll do it however you want me to do it, so.
Well, that's a great opening, thank you. And please introduce yourself, I don't know if you've met everybody?
I have not, I'm John Sammons, I worked for the county for 22 years. And Don saw me in muscle whites one day. He pleaded with me to come and help him out, so I said I would.
We're glad to have you, you've done a good job in the last 22 years, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any board comments? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you all.